Before Mr. McCoslin takes roll call, I would like to tell the public that we're having a few difficulties with our public comment form. And so if you would like to make a public comment for us tonight, please email the board and at the subject line just write "public comment." And please make sure you include your name and address in that, and we will read your public comment. If you were successful in getting onto our response form, we obviously will also read that. But for right now, if you have any comments tonight, please email them to us with the subject line "public comment" with your name and address in your email. Thank you. Okay, roll call then?
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. McGregor? Mr. Modraak?
Here.
Mr. Nagel?
Here.
Mrs. Ruhl?
Here.
Mr. Scalzo?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzzo?
Present.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mrs. Dobos?
Here.
All nine members present.
So at this time, I have two public comments. The first one comes from Nathan Graff, and he lives at 1060 Surrey Woods Road in Bethel Park. "My name is Nathan Graff, and I have three children in the Bethel Park School System, grades two, four, and six. I've written before about wanting the option for my kids to be back to all in-person schooling. Remote learning is not good for my children as they continue to struggle to learn this way and struggle to enjoy life this way. What I've tried to point out in the past is there's an overwhelming amount of scientific evidence that the common flu is more of a risk to children than COVID-19, and that schools are not a commonplace of transmission. On this point, both Doctors Fauci and Redfield, heads of the NIAID and the CDC respectively, said back in December that kids should be back in school and that schools are not where the virus is being spread. In fact, the results of a North Carolina study just came out this week, which showed that across 11 school districts that did in-person instruction, zero cases of COVID-19 were transmitted from a child to an adult in the school. However, the main reason for me reaching out today is that I want to ask why is it we still do not have a plan for when our elementary and middle school kids can go back in-person four or five days a week? Since the beginning of the year, the board has been saying their goal was to get us back to in-person schooling, yet we're still only doing two days per week, let alone religious schools, which have been five days a week all year with no problems. Why have other public schools in the area have been able to get back to more in-person education and we haven't? For instance, upon just asking some of my coworkers and doing some internet searches, I've been able to determine West Jefferson has been offering five days in-person since mid-October for grades K through two and five days in-person since mid-November for grades three through five. Upper St. Clair has been offering four days in-person for grades K through six since early December. Baldwin Whitehall started four days of in-person education today for grades K through six. Elizabeth Forward Elementary has been offering five days a week in-person education since November 4th. North Allegheny has been five days a week in-person since mid-December for grades K through five. Fox Chapel Elementary is currently in-person five days a week. McKeesport Elementary has been in-person five days a week for quite a while. And South Park Elementary is planning to do four days in-person starting in February. I'm sure I'm missing some schools, but again, why are they able to do it and Bethel Park hasn't been able to? No offense, but I can draw no other conclusion than our administration has not been making this a priority as much as these other schools administrations, and that Bethel Park education is becoming inferior to these other schools' education. Secondly, I want to point out that out of everyone I talked to who has kids in school at places other than Bethel, the kids are all allowed to use the playground. Many people might not think this is a big deal, but these kids are already under significant amount of stress from not being able to see their friends as such, social distancing, wearing a mask, et cetera. Please find a way for the kids to be able to use the playgrounds as soon as possible. My kids have been noticeably more depressed this year and need some good exercise and fun at recess time. Nathan Graff." Would someone like to read Mr. Crowley's comment?
Hi. Next one's... The next one's from Ken Crowley, 2020 Millennium Court. "On Thursday, January 7th, the Pennsylvania Department of Education and Department of Health issued a joint statement that recommended and advocated for full return to school on behalf of all elementary students across the Commonwealth. In their recommendation, they shared that a recent meta-analysis of data indicate slower susceptibility for children under the age of 10. They also noted the importance of in-person instruction for students at the elementary school level. Based on this information, all of our neighboring school districts have moved forward with their plans for full return to in-person instruction. However, Bethel Park has not done so despite always stating in prior meetings they follow the guidance and recommendation from the state in regards to their modes of instruction. Bethel Park also meets all requirements to return to in-person instruction at the elementary level in regards to state orders regarding mask-wearing and following social distancing recommendations to the greatest extent possible. I strongly encourage the board administration to do right by our neediest learners and present and pass a plan for a four-day elementary return for K through four at next week's meeting. Your fellow peers have realized this importance, and it is time for Bethel Park to follow suit. Thank you."
I don't see any other comments at this time, but remember, public, that we will continue to accept comments through the end of the meeting, and if you have any comments, please send them to us in our email with "public comments" at the top and your address within the email also, and we will read them that way, because I don't think that the public comment form is working as it should at this point in time. At this time, do I have any committee reports?
I would just like to report that the Steel Center School has gone back to school and that their process is if they have a COVID case or someone that's tested positive, instead of closing down the whole school, they're doing it by program. That way, they're able to keep all the students going as much as they can. So that seems to be working well so far. And as far as the AIU, they've begun their search for a diversity director, and we'll have to see how that goes, but that's going to be something new added to the Allegheny Intermediate Unit through a special founding through the Graeble Foundation. So we'll be sharing more about that later on.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to report on the Recreation Department meeting. At this time, the Recreation Department is pretty much on hold as our schools are closed to outside activities. We are starting a slow transition with allowing the Rec Department Swimming Program to start up, but other programs will only start after we are able to ensure that our students are back in school safely first. And so that would be the only thing regarding the Rec Department. Oh, no, one more thing. The council, you might have read about it in the paper or in the almanac today, got a grant to make some revisions to some of the athletic fields, moving the T-ball field to Millennium and doing some updates at Park Avenue of the Community Center for the track, the field, and possibly a splash pad for the future.
I would like to report on Diversity and Inclusion Committee. We last met at the beginning of December. We discussed getting a survey out to assess where we stand to different stakeholder groups. Many of you may have seen that survey. If you have gotten the email for the survey, please take just a few minutes to fill it out. This is important for us to begin to form the broader committees so that we can assess where we are and where we go from here. So again, please take the time. It'll only take a couple minutes to fill out the survey. It's more of a climate survey and assessment. We're still in the question-asking process, but we do want to start building the committees out in order to start looking at solutions and programs.
Thank you. Any other committees? Curriculum Committee, Mr. Scalzo.
Yes, we have one item, High School Course Selection Guide for 2021-2022 school year.
Ms. Wells or Dr. O'Rourke or someone, do you want to talk about that? Or I don't know who else is on the meeting who might be able to talk about that?
Yeah, I'll let Mrs. Wells talk a little bit about it. Her and Mr. Vellani have been working on some updates as far as our course selection guide. She can do a little bit of a summary unless Mr. Vellani's there as well.
I don't see Mr. Vellani on, so...
Beth, would you mind doing a little bit of a summary there?
Sure. Mr. Vellani has been working on creating a red line document so that you can see all of the changes being proposed in the red line document. He is looking at working with the Social Studies Department in updating their course electives. The thought is to add one course for the Social Studies course electives pending it goes through the proper process, which would be a committee and then a board review. You can see that in the Social Studies Department. And then he is working with the English Department in restructuring our English courses. There would not be a change, but rather than looking at two semester courses, they're looking at scheduling that as a full-year course where the competencies and the curricular aspects do not change. They're just going to combine that into one year-long course rather than two semesters. So those are the large things that he's looking at, and you can see in the copy provided to you, all the red line changes. There was some updates to some of the course descriptions and the updated graduation requirements with the pathways that will take effect with the class of 2023 have been added to the course selection guide. And those are the big items, and then he will have a clean copy for the public for next week for the voting meeting.
Okay, Ms. Wells, since we only got this about an hour ago, we haven't really had time to look through it and to really formulate any questions. So we need to make sure that he is available for next week's meeting also to answer any questions. And maybe we can also, if we have questions, we can send them to you and to him during the week. When you're talking about the semester course in English, are you talking about 12th grade?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
I had one brief comment, Beth. I'm not sure if you made it or not. Struggles for success, they're also talking about to reach our diversity goal and objective, offering a course addressing diversity at the high school as well, and that would be a new addition.
Okay. And for these additions or anything, have there been any curriculum committees that have been meeting this year, or are these just from the departments, these suggested changes from the departments and the facilitators and the principals?
These current changes are from the committee of the whole or the entire high school department. Right now, we just posted for a Social Studies Committee to begin some work, and the intent is to post for the Science Committee here shortly to give some work K through 12. So we're in that process, but these particular changes with this course selection guide are coming from the direction of the facilitators through the administration at the high school.
Okay. So the Science and Social Studies recommendations will be for next year's course selection?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions about the course selection?
Could we just, could we, could we get an, I see some of the red lines in this document as I'm scrolling through, but could we get maybe a little bit of an executive summary that just highlights, you know, what new classes have we added, what existing classes have been removed, and just kind of an executive summary of some of the changes?
You will get a one-pager that will have that on it when they're, when they complete the process of what they're redlining. Right now, the addition that we have is that Social Studies course with diversity, the struggle course that's been brought forward, and then we have some name-changing pieces. The course, for all practical purposes, is very similar other than some updated software. Instead of Photoshop for an art class, it's now using a different format, but it's using iPads. But the courses in general, there are not any major deletion, addition, other than that Social Studies class at this point.
Can we also get, there's, I just got to a page where the whole course selection, what did they call it? The English Language Arts Core Course mapping is all deleted.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, so in that, like page 49, the whole thing is deleted. So if students are looking for that, where's the, there's only, there's only, there's no mapping?
I think that that might have been in there, and I'll talk to Mr. Vellani tomorrow. I think there was supposed to be, the reason it was changed and the reason it's missing is because of that full class in 12th grade, they were working on that, so they must have not completed what they were working on. So we'll talk to them.
That executive summary was going to be huge right now based on how much redlining is going on.
So, yeah, please send that to us this week. Have them send both the summary and the new revision to us in our emails this week.
Yes.
Before board docs.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And in this, like before, this doesn't mean that these are classes we're going to run for sure. It's still dependent upon the number of students that we get to enroll in the class.
Yeah, it's the demands, and then once we get the demand tallies in, you guys will get a list of courses that have less than 15, 13, it depends on the course, and then we'll talk about whether or not we're offering those or we're opening up the, letting those kids know that they need to choose another elective more often than not.
Mrs. Dobos?
Mrs. O'Rourke?
The summary that I think was it both of you were asking for, so rationale is what we're looking for, right?
No, it's just, they usually provide us with a list of the changes.
Okay.
It's just a brief list of the changes.
Will we get a rationale for the changes? Like, okay, this course changed to this name and why? And it'll come with it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Mrs. O'Rourke, do we?
I noticed just as I was scrolling, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Do we ever list the CTE classes in here? Any of the other courses that they have an option to take? Or where are they listed in a...
There's, it's not listed in our course catalog. There's a statement about the Career and Technology Center, but not specifically what those courses are. I think there's a summary that just basically says these are the shops that are offered that's in the course catalog.
Okay, because they do have a, I guess, a new page, and your counselors did see it, that explains the CTE program, and they were very impressed as to how the program was listed and the options, once you would take some of those courses, where they might lead you, like in a more secondary education and things like that. I just didn't know if we did anything like that, a pathway type of thing.
It's great to give that information out. You know, I talked to the guidance counselors and Mr. Vellani to give, you know, as much information as we possibly can for kids so they make appropriate decisions. You said that was coming from the Career and Technology Center?
Yeah, the guidance and Mr. Vellani saw they are.
Oh, they, okay.
Yeah, they would be familiar with what you're talking about.
Okay, I'll talk to them and see why it's not a part of this.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we, do we have an estimate of, you know, there's a lot of courses in the course catalog. Do we have an estimate on the percentage that we actually run in any given school year? Is it 90%, 70%, 50%? Do we know?
I don't know if Dr. Jen Sandy could say that as the prior high school principal. How many, when we have courses in the course catalog, how many, what percentage do we typically run if we don't, you know, like we have those courses that nobody, you know, chooses?
You mean what percentage don't run?
Yeah, like, yeah, that's what I thought too. I was going to say, like, we basically run about 95% of our course catalog.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Ryer, can Mr. Vellani be invited in right now? Okay, he's going to be invited in.
Mr. Vellani, you're getting invited in.
Yeah, I did look at that, but I was looking at something, I guess a little bit, um, probably just a little, I can speak to that when Mr. Ruhl, he looks home in there on her room and sun, and he looks, very good graphic, and it's probably something in my, I don't know.
Hello?
Hello. Mr. Vellani, do you want to speak to that, those questions?
Yes. So the Course Selection Guide is obviously a lengthy document. The board has provided the red line version tonight to review. Speaking on the English 12 course, there were no curricular changes. Essentially, we took the literature and writing component and merged it into a single course. Right now, the students were taking two semester courses. One was front-loaded with writing, one was with literature. Essentially, we're not changing the courses at all. We're just condensing it over a full year, where some students were struggling with a semester writing. This will now be distributed throughout the whole year. So it's not actually changing any of our current offerings. It's just taking two semester courses into a full-year course. The CETE explanations are in the, towards the end of the course catalog. Each program at Steel Center is in there, including their new programs, the course numbers and everything there. In regard to Mr. Christensen's question, you know, when you look at course things, one of the things we do is we have a wide variety of offerings. Every year changes based on the course demand. After the initial scheduling phase, we look at some of our elective offerings and seeing based on staffing and demands if those courses can run. So we'll get a percentage for you and be able to provide that information to the board as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vellani, also, I was trying to find the Steel Center stuff and so forth. So check your Table of Contents page. I think that it needs to be updated when you update it all, because it said 103, and I think it's 116 and so forth. So that might be part of the confusion. Thank you for coming in on such a short notice.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the High School Course Selection Guide? Okay, Mr. McGregor?
Yes.
Do you want to ask us about the items under personnel?
Well, we have six items there. Approval of EDR programs. We have approval of unpaid leave of absence, acceptance of resignation, approval of COVID-19 compensation services, compensatory services, change of assignment, and appointment of personnel.
Okay, I have a question about number four. Ms. Sutton, I think you're on in the meeting. Can you take a minute to explain to us all about this, this package for the tutoring?
Yes, thank you. Sarah Schu is also on, so I'd like her to also comment a little bit. But basically, the COVID compensatory services is not just for Bethel Park. It's for the whole state, and we were able, as you see there, to get a small amount of grant funds that will pay for the staff to provide the services. And this started with a big coordination of data collection that Dr. Schu headed up, and all the teachers had to collect data in order to determine eligibility of the students. And one other point, this is not extended school year. That's a different program. And Sarah, is there anything you'd like to add briefly to the discussion?
No, I think you clearly explained it. We are looking at the data that we used to calculate who qualified for these services, looked at where the students with IEPs were progressing at the close of March in their progress report to where they are now or where they were by the end of the summer. So it compared those two data. It was very black and white on who qualified.
Thank you. Any other questions about any of the other six items? Okay, then let's move forward to the Finance Committee. Mr. Christensen?
Okay. Items one through four are the normal monthly reports. I guess I have some questions on five and six.
Oh, excuse me, one second. Under Personnel, is everyone okay with moving these six items to our...
Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda. Or is there any one of them that you would like to hold out?
I think all the blanks are filled in. That's what I was trying to double-check, because the last time, not all the blanks were filled in. But I think as long as all the blanks are filled in for the...
Right.
We're good to go. Or at least I am.
Okay, so, Mr. McCoslin, they can all go into the Consent Agenda. I think that the High School Course Selection Guide has too many questions. That should not be in the consent agenda. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Christensen.
No, it's fine. No, it's fine. Any questions on items one through four from the board? Those are the monthly reports that we see. Looking at number five, so in the public content, it's transportation agreement for the Southwood, Auburn Lay, some of these other areas. Mr. McCoslin, or I don't know who would address this one, but?
Ms. Sutton.
Ms. Sutton, okay. There's, so Ms. Sutton, another question for you then. So it says that this comes out of the CARES grant, and it's in addition to what we've already contracted with them. Are we getting, it seems like transportation is something that would already have been covered. Are we getting some kind of extra services for the extra expense we're paying? Or how does that work?
I see. There are three separate items. So the bottom two are funded through the CARES grant. And because they're contractual, we can add it now for the end of the, from now to the end of the school year for the second semester. And then next year's contract, we don't have to renew that. The first one is transportation. That is a county requirement to have a contract with Allegheny County for if a student is experiencing homelessness, and we transport the student back to their home district, there's a process you would follow to see if we get reimbursed. So that one doesn't have anything to do with CARES. I see. Sorry for that.
Oh, okay.
Overlapped.
I guess my question was, if we already had a contract in place for the term of the school year to cover these expenses, and then, you know, we're going to pay additional, is there, is there an additional service that we're going to get from this? Or is this just a way to pay for the services that we already contracted with them?
I see. Very good question. So that's something you're not allowed to do with the CARES grant, as I understand it. You're not allowed to use the money to apply to something that you already had existing services for. So in the case of the second one with Southwood, we're going to add another social worker just until the end of the year, and I already have the revised contract. We don't have to sustain that for the future. We have a little bit of money right now through that that we can apply and get some extra help for the high school and the elementary.
Okay, so that's, that's the additional service we're going to get from the additional money that we're going to pay through the CARES grant. Okay.
And when we, Lori? When we talked about this, we also said, for Mr. Christensen's point on number one, that sometimes children within our district, or children who are responsible, may need unanticipated transportation to another facility. And if they qualify under the Allegheny County Children and Youth and Families Act, then we might get a reimbursement from the, from the IU for that. I believe you said, Lori, and that's where that comes from.
I had a question on seven. Does anybody else have a question on six?
No, but seven, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You may answer it.
So I guess there's a TBD in there. Do we know what the TBD is?
Yeah, we have an amount. Doug, what's our approximate amount?
It's under Administrative Content.
Yeah, okay.
6521.
And what is it? What is it?
No, Mr. Piscinari needed a talk on the phone.
Okay, so this is, it's called Exceptional Child Through Safe Schools. Right now, we have Safe Schools, which is our online training platform for employees. Right now, we have about 194 training courses through Safe Schools. And the best way I can explain this is that Safe Schools offers other packages. And this is another package. It's called the Exceptional Child Course Library. And this package falls under Special Education, but also it touches a lot with the social and emotional aspect, too. And that's kind of why we kind of looked into this, is because not, one, it only hits special needs, two, social and emotional, but three, it also hits a lot of the mandated training that we have to do, such as trauma-informed approach. That has a course on there for one hour or so. It hits a lot of the aspects. So we figured for one year, to buy it, it'll do for this school year and next school year.
And we had an approximate cost on it, Anthony.
Yeah, it's, it's under Administrative Content. It's roughly around, give or take, $6,521 that will be paid through the grant.
Is this something that the staff would use during a two-hour?
Two-hour delay, professional development days. And it's not only for professional staff. It's also for staff that, you know, support staff, too, and then administrative staff. So it's something that we can use throughout the year, summertime, you know. So it's just not for professional staff. It's the district staff.
And this falls under what Mrs. Sutton had said, that this is over and above what we currently have? That's why you can use it for the grant, correct?
Yeah, so this will fall within the grant, correct? And yeah, and this is something that, it's new. We don't, we've never had this before, correct?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I knew we had the program for teachers to take it. I just didn't understand why we were repaying.
Yeah, a lot of these courses, you'll find that we have to meet state mandate on a lot of the courses. And this Safe Schools provides a lot of that for us. So it's, especially in the time that we're in with COVID, it provides an online platform of the training courses instead of in-person. So it really is helping the district throughout the year with all the mandated training courses.
Any more questions on that item? So two cargo vans to replace some old ones. I don't have any questions on that.
You want to update us on the cargo van?
Sure. These vans are going to replace two vans that are year 2000 vans with vans that really require extensive repairs to be inspected, and they have rather high mileage. I think they're both over 100,000 miles. So these were scheduled to be replaced this year in the budget, and were budgeted for. We did purchase them from a dealer out in York, PA, because they were able to provide a price that, it says Co-Stars. It is Co-Stars, but it was slightly better than the Co-Stars pricing. So we did search the state for the best deal we could find.
Thank you.
So those are the only items that'll appear on the agenda? We have some more items on here that are discussion-only. Was it your intent, Ms. McCoslin, to put any of these discussion-only items on, on the agenda? Was it going to be?
Only if you make a decision that you want to move forward with the technology, community room, or the other purchases under technology, then we'd have to add an item. But we could do those outside the consent agenda.
So I don't see any reason why one through eight can't go on the consent agenda?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
One through eight on consent.
Okay.
So Doug, do you or Ron want to walk us through the technology topic?
Mr. Ryer? I can do that. So we've been, before Christmas, we met with three vendors to look at refreshing the community room, maybe in accordance with the board's wishes to solve some problems. So the problems that we're trying to solve are: design a system that offers one-button control for starting the system; provide a USB room connector to allow the room to be used with any conference platform, such as Meet, WebEx, or Zoom; design a system that offers one-button start for media streaming to YouTube, and has the capability of sending a signal to Bethel Park TV; allow up to four external callers to join the meeting via VoIP, regular telephone, without the use of conferencing software. So tasks necessary to achieve the project goals are: replace the existing projectors and screens with bright and up-to-date equipment that scales content properly; replace existing camera and AV system entirely with a new AV system and camera; update the existing presenter wall plate inputs; provide a video output stream that can be further encoded and sent to Bethel Park TV. Additional requirements that are not part of the proposals that we received and are really outside the scope of any technology company that does AV installations would be actually completing the connection to Bethel Park TV and setting up a call queueing for residents to be able to call in and speak their comments. And so we've got some ideas on both of those things, but neither are what I'm going to tell you right now. And so we've got three proposals from three local companies. And although there's three proposals, two are competitive with each other, and one is much higher. And the competitive ones are between 69 and 75, depending on options. And we'll be prepared to nail that down completely if you decide to put this on the agenda for next week.
That's 1,000?
1,000?
69,000 to 75,000, correct. One was close to 100.
Wow. There were only three bids. Mrs. Dobis, we had asked to have an alumni who does some work for other things.
I think he was there, right?
Well, we've had some conversations with the alumni student who currently is working in that capacity.
He works at Robert Moore. Right, he works at, yeah.
Yes. So, yes, we have had, we have brought him in and talked with him. He's provided some ideas and some input.
Is he one of the proposals?
He is not.
I don't think he could do that, Kim, but I was here when he did come in, and then Ron sat with him to go over our proposals. Keep in mind, what we're trying to achieve is totally update the room. And, and one of the things that I said to Ron is, let's not look like we're trying to rig anything here. Let's strip the room of the current technology, put everything in that's brand-new to achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve. So some of the equipment that we're taking out, we'll be able to use other places in the district. So it's not as though everything will be scrapped. It will not be. But yes, that young man did come in, and he was very impressive to meet and talk with.
Ron, could you tell me in a couple words what this will enable us to do? When we get all this, what will we be able to do?
Well, you'll be able to do what you can do now, but you'll be able to do it even more easily. You won't necessarily need to be here to run the technology for the meeting, unless it'll be, it'll be easier. You can do it.
Oh, well, that would be something, okay. You're in.
We're not letting you off the hook there, Ron.
That's right. You sold me.
Well, I mean, at face value, you know, when you first hear the number, it seems like a more cost-effective solution is just to, I don't know, talk louder or something, you know? But, you know, the, we do struggle with the equipment a lot today, and I have to believe that some of it's also maybe at the end of life, and we're probably going to have to re, replace it kind of piecemeal going forward. So my recommendation, the rest of Bork and Chime in, I don't think we're ready to vote on this. I think we should probably take a look at, a little bit like what you said, where, where would some of the equipment be deployed and maybe offset costs in other areas? What, you know, does our next couple-year expense look like in just maintaining, you know, the technology here? You know, because we'll probably have to, we're probably going to have to look at some kind of a replacement and update, even if we keep the same infrastructure. And, you know, what do we think that looks like? Because you threw out some big numbers, but sticking with we, with what we have, won't be free either. Right?
Right.
So it'd be kind of to look at that also in the, in the proposal.
And keep in mind, too, I would say the other thing with, what COVID has taught us, too, this room is not only just used for board meetings anymore. It does have multiple other uses. For example, tomorrow morning, we're going to be meeting with a large group. Some of them will be here, some of them will be remote, and it's going to be able to handle all of those kinds of issues more smoothly. So it is a large outlay, but the outlay is designed to make the room much more user-friendly, much better, much more efficient, and, and also to give the room what I'd call a much broader use.
So, Mr. McCoslin, can you chime in financially here for us?
You're asking me to chime in?
Like, do we have money? Or do you have a secret, something in your back pocket?
You obviously have money. You have, you have options to utilize your capital reserve for something like this. We would have to do some shifting around in your current budget to pay for something like this. I haven't really gone to that extent, because I just got final numbers today. I can certainly look at that as an option, if that's something you want to proceed with. We certainly could build this into next year's budget. Or as you see the numbers for next year's budget, you can make a decision then on whether that's something you want to proceed with or not. So you have lots of options on how you want to proceed with that type of costs. But yes, we had to cover it. We would have to forego something else on the current budget.
I somewhat disagree with what Mr. Christensen said, because I have been frustrated as all get-out about this entire system and the, the sound and the inability for us to receive public comments in a much more efficient manner. I mean, the first time we did this, we had somebody in another room answering the phone, and it, I mean, and then we, and then we went through a whole process where we read thousands of words of emails as public comments. And tonight, our public comment form isn't really working very well, and so we have to do comments via email, which we can do, but, and I've also been very frustrated, because some people are not on Facebook, and they can't access this meeting. And so we have to be able to stream to Bethel Park TV, and we haven't been able to do that. And this, with this media streaming that you're talking about, I think we're going to be able to do that, and we'd go to YouTube, not to Facebook. And everyone's not on Facebook, but you can, everyone can access YouTube, right? You just click, click on it, okay? And we've had problems with the sound, reverberation, or not being able to hear, and, and all of that, so.
Just so we're clear, there would be an additional cost to be able to, to stream to Bethel Park TV, but these systems would set you up with the capability to make that happen.
Right, but we could stream to YouTube directly, not, without that, right?
And also, I think, don't misconstrue, that this system will not solve your problem with public comments. You would have to, it's whatever platform you're going to use, whether it be WebEx or Zoom or whatever, would have to solve your problem with public being able to make comments. It isn't going to be done through the system that will be put in here. Just so you're aware. I mean, I'm correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Explain that, explain that a little bit further.
I mean, public, taking public comments is really a process of queuing calls, screening calls, and then promoting the calls into the meeting. And so that's typically something that a producer does, like a call-in talk radio station. And so none of these solutions have producer functionality, and I'm not aware of any to do. I did talk to all the vendors about that, and nobody has a solution like that. One suggested Chorus Call. I found one online that, that is a talk show producer, software-based, that allows you to do it. I don't, I don't know much about it, but, you know, the alternative is that somebody sits in the meeting and tries to sort through the people who join the meeting, find the person who joins and wants to speak, who may not have joined with their real name, you know, and then promote that person to talking to the meeting, and then mute them when they're done. And so if you only have a few people in your meeting, that's not too bad. But we've had meetings with 900 people on Facebook. And if we have meetings that have even a portion, a small portion of that number, it's going to be very difficult to keep track of that list, because the list will continue to move as people come and go. And so trying to nail that person down, to be able to promote them into the room and make them able to talk, it's going to be a little challenging. So I think, you know, a producer system makes sense. I don't have much experience, but I'm willing to learn. I don't have much experience, but I'm willing to learn.
Well, Pam, if I could just make one quick comment. I think we should try to find a way to move ahead with this. And I know it's a huge expense, and I say huge because we didn't anticipate this, but again, the room is getting multiple uses now, and I think will continue to. And the other piece of it too is, it has been at times very frustrating and failed to serve the purpose that we've wanted it to serve. And right now, it's pretty dependent on one person, and if that person isn't around, then we're back to square one. And by the way, Ron is training, and I'm not remembering her.
Jessica. Jessica.
Jessica to fill in when needed. But on the other hand, you know, there's always the cost when you go to something like this, and of course, the cost is big. And again, we decide, or I should say, I kind of said to Ron, don't put in, if this is an old this and almost at the end of the life of that, if we're doing a new room, let's do a new room. So, that's, that was the other thing. Obviously, that pushes up cost.
I do, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Vince.
That's okay.
Can you give us an idea of the age of the system we have currently? And I know it's components, so it's not, I mean, you know, are we three years, five years, eight years?
Various parts of various ages. So, I think those speakers are probably about 14 or 15 years old. And the amplifier on the rack back there and the mixing unit, well, the amplifier's probably about six years old. The mixing unit is probably closer to 20 years old. That unit up there is new, we just put that in. And the camera on the wall back there is new, so.
Projectors?
The projectors are, one is, I think, three, and the other one is probably 12-plus, which is old for a projector.
Will this new system allow people to actually read what's on the screen?
All three solutions have 6,000 or brighter lumen projectors, and they're laser projectors. So, and we would be replacing both screens too with the proper format, you know, not these, not these square screens that we try to fit rectangular images on, but rectangular screens that we can put rectangular images on. And they would be bright screens, so it ought to be like watching an LCD TV at the Sunday afternoon football game.
My other comment would be, I agree with both of you on certain parts of what you've said. You know, I personally think it's something that we should move forward with. I think that for all of us in the room that were here on March 13th last year, and we were waiting for the Department of Education to make their announcement about COVID-19, and we sat here and what happened? Their system failed. How did that make you feel? Right? I mean, we felt very frustrated and very disconnected. So, as our public is out there trying to listen to our meetings and understand what's going on, we need to give them that opportunity. It is hard to spend money, but I think this would be money well spent.
And I don't think that when COVID is over, that we will continue, I think, forever to broadcast our meetings now.
Yeah, I think that's great.
And look at the number of people we're reaching. When we have it in person, we've got five here sometimes in person of the public, but this way, we reach so many more people. So, even if, even when we're able to come back in this room in a semblance of normalcy, my vision is that we would continue to stream these meetings.
I understand the importance of updating the system. I kind of agree to a certain extent, but I'm still a little bit hesitant to, you spend 70 to $75,000 and you still can't have a community member that we can't, like, to hear the public's voice, right? For them to call in, for them to, you know, communicate their message. If we can't, if we're spending, again, I'm okay with updating old equipment and it gives us, you know, multiple options, but, you know, to still spend that money and still not have the ability to hear the public's voice? We have to hear the public's voice. I mean, it's just, there's something, there's something to that, you know?
I agree with you. I think the only, the thing that, the fear that I have, and I think Ron alluded to it a little while ago, when someone calls in on the phone, do you know who they are and where they live? It's a real issue, and I don't know how you actually identify your residents versus someone who wants to call in and create disturbance, havoc, whatever. And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I just think that there's a real security concern and a safety concern that we may not be talking to our constituency.
Well, there isn't.
Other school districts have requested that if they want to speak at the meeting, that they submit their name and address prior to the meeting.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That way, you would have a queue then to call on them when it was their turn to speak. And then, if they don't get the name submitted by a certain time that day, then they can't speak.
And could we do that, Ron?
That solves the problem, I think.
Well, I think probably we could. I mean, we'd have to see what the workflow looked like, but that would be a more organized approach to doing it than just letting people call in, you know, willy-nilly and trying to figure out who they are. We'd still have to make sure that whenever they join the meeting, that they join with a recognizable name and not, you know, not Big Bob or, you know, Sally's, you know.
And we get the point.
Those items can be worked out.
Well, we could, we could work that.
How is it, Fred, where it's going with that?
Well, those items can be worked out.
And can, and can the list of participants be alphabetized so we can find those names easily?
I'm not aware of the specific capabilities of the system to do that, so.
The list right now is like all over.
We'll work it out. I think the important thing is here is that our meetings have to get out to the public.
Yes.
I think we're all in agreement of that. I'm not, of course, it's not, we have like 70,000, 100,000 lanes around, but I think it's great importance from this time forward that we make every effort we possibly can to get our meetings open to the public, as many venues that are reliable that we can. We work out these other details later. Other districts are doing it as we are, that's all. I think it's important we just get this out there.
If possible, I'd still like to see what, when we look at a $70,000, you know, net investment, it isn't really the net investment because sticking with what we got isn't free. And so, it would be good just to kind of understand, what would it cost us to stick with the current system? Because I don't think it's free, you know? So, it just kind of helps us, at least me anyway, justify what we have to spend a little bit.
Is this safe to say we need further discussion on this?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. The other question I had on the system, Ron, is if, could, is this system hardwired, permanent? Or, you know, let's say we had a meeting in the, you know, auditorium or something like that, could this, any of this equipment be repurposed, mobilized? Or is it, you know, because equipments get, you know, get smaller, you know, more mobile, you know?
It would be hardwired to this room.
Okay.
So, like, you know, the WebEx camera, it's a complete unit that has AV on it. And so, whenever we needed to meet down in the high school auditorium, I took it down there and worked with Jessica to plumb it into the auditorium sound system and make it work like it works in this room. And it took a fair amount of time to do that, but it could be done. This system will be permanently affixed to this room, and it won't be possible to unwire it and take it anywhere. It has to stay here.
So, Mrs. Dobus, you asked about the names being sorted in the participants field. In WebEx, you can. You'll always be at the top with the host, but over to the right of the search bar, there's a, there's a button that says sort, and you can sort by name. It's going to sort them by the way they're entered, so most people are going to show up by their first name sorted, but it will sort them alphabetically.
So, if we get their names ahead of time that they want to speak, I could sort them into that area and then we could call them that way.
Pittsburgh, I mean, we can look guidance and Amy can check with her law firm. Pittsburgh obviously has a bigger operation, and they've been WebEx, the whole dime, so they can, because other districts do it and we can get some insight. We just weren't in agreement, we need to move forward with it.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. And so, if we delay this, well, give me a sense of how long it's going to take to do this, this room? Like, if we, once we approve it, what's the timeframe?
Well, I think it depends on the vendor availability. We're probably looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of one to two months from the time we say go to the time that's, the room is up and ready to go.
Okay, so, for those of you who want to delay this and have more discussion on it, that would be February, and then it would be March.
Could we, could we get some of these answers? I mean, you know, honest to goodness, I would like to see what's going on because, you know, Mr. Ryer, you've given us a quote several times about how much that camera costs. The camera you just told us is not that old. The recycle of all this is a concern of mine also.
Well, the camera, I think, was $8,000. And we would recycle it into a place like the high school, LGI, or potentially, you know, another large meeting space somewhere else in the district where we could maximize the use of it with, you know, a lot of people attending a meeting. LGI probably makes the most sense.
But, I mean, could we get the list of, you know, we have no idea what the equipment you're even talking about at this point in time.
I have the equipment here, so.
And is that us buying it and them installing it, or are they buying it?
No, this is a professional installation. You know, I'm not a sound guy. I'm a technology director. So, you know, in my role here, I've been pleased to be able to serve you in that capacity, and I've stretched to try to serve you in this capacity, but this is not my, this is not what I do. And so, these are companies that are professional installers of AV equipment, and they would be installing it.
Okay, they would be installing it, and then, other than you, who else would be trained on this? Because again, as you said, that's where you're being stretched. So, there's got to be somebody at the high school when we run BPTV, or there's got to be, you know, our auditorium director that should be able to do this.
The company that installs it, and all three of them are willing to provide training to whatever audience we want to have trained. So, whether that's one person or whether it's the entire board, they're willing to provide training after they install it. I think it makes sense to have other people available to be able to do this. Jessica is a prime candidate since that's her role at the, you know, in the high school auditorium. There may be some conflict sometimes though because, you know, once things get back in the swing and maybe we're in some semblance of normal, it wouldn't be necessarily unusual for her to be in conflict with something that's, with a board meeting based on a school play or something. The, if you want to bring a teacher over from BPTV or a student over from BPTV, I think that that could work, you know, as long as we can work it through our contractual obligations with our unions.
I guess, just one question I have on the, you know, decision before faster and slower, I guess, and it's really to, you know, you and Doug, is, are you confident that all of the connections to the exterior world, you know, whether it's Google or, you know, whatever systems, BPTV, are going to work? Do they provide you enough evidence that you have confidence? Because, you know, the biggest mistake we could make is investing to make everything inside the room work better, but we still have just many problems connecting with the outside of the world.
So, the YouTube connection is enabled by a stream encoder that actually, you plug in your YouTube, your district YouTube key, stream key, and then once that key's been plugged in and saved, from that point forward, anytime you start your stream, it goes. So, that process is...
My question was, are you comfortable it's going to work reliably?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So, do we want to move forward with this for next meeting, or do we want to gather more and more information and wait until February?
I just want to make sure that the public can call in and we can hear their voice. I mean, for that kind of money, I think that, I just want to make sure that that can happen. I think it's critical. I mean, there's, there are, obviously through all this whole time, there's a lot of emotion and, you know, you're reading an email, but I think that some of those community members really want to be heard. So, I just, I just want to make sure that that can happen.
Can we put it on the agenda for next week as a voting item and possibly, if we don't have enough answers, table it?
Yes.
That way, we have the opportunity to move forward.
Yeah, just don't put it into the consent agenda.
Yeah, don't put it into consent, okay. Sounds good. And then, any information that you want to send us about the, about the details during the week? Just email that to us, please? Thank you.
I mean, I do want to mention too, Ron, working with Doug, they have really done a great deal of work on this. So, Ron, you are to be commended. I've been kind of just, you know, peeking my nose in it every once in a while, but you and Doug, and especially you, Ron, have really been working very, very hard on this. And so, hopefully, more than hopefully, we've, you know, addressed this issue and resolved it.
Yes, I hope to.
And me, three. Okay, the next item.
So, the next item that I think is also in your area is, I think it was a technology plan or staff technology plan for K through six and seven through 12.
Yeah, so, we're going to, we're going to take the seven through 12 off of there. This is just K through six. And this plan, which we talked about a little bit, I think, at the last meeting, really is, like, really designed to help solve the immediate problems that elementary teachers are having with remote instruction. And it solves that problem by providing them with a modern, up-to-date mobile computer, PC computer, that they can connect to their classroom using a docking station. And so, one wire, they bring their computer to the classroom, plug it into the docking station, and it lights up the external monitor that we're going to provide, that we, you know, it's part of the plan, and it lights up the classroom projector. And any peripherals that they need to plug in, you know, whether it be a document camera or a DVD drive, they plug into the docking station, and so they don't have to replug those every time they enter the room. And so, that's the, that's the plan. And, you know, we would provide that technology for every teacher and everybody in a teaching role so that that were, so that there's equity among teachers. And then, for pair professionals and aides, we would provide them with a up-to-date Chromebook that has enough capacity and horsepower to do what needs to be done. PCs are better at generating content, but Chromebooks are, you know, 30 to 50% of the cost of a PC, depending on which Chromebook we finally select. And so, this plan, you know, we're looking at somewhere north of 200 PCs, and we're looking at somewhere around 150-plus Chromebooks, and we, and then external monitors and docking stations and wireless keyboards and mice. And so, right now, as it stands, the plan is between 400 and $450,000. And I can nail that down exactly once I have the final number and I know specifically which Chromebooks we're going to recommend. But that's...
What would...
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
What would be the timeline on it? Because this is largely to address the short-term needs with remote learning. If we're not going to be able to get this plan up and in place until March or April, it's a lot of money out the window, right?
Well, it's, so, certainly, the, there's an urgency to getting better computers in the hands of elementary teachers today. And we're all operating under the hope that COVID goes away or is effectively controlled by the vaccine, and we return to instruction normally sometime in the next six months. Now, that's a lot to predicate the plan on, and I would say that there's some odds there that we're not in control of. So, I think that right now, if we were to buy today, we'd be looking at probably close to a monthly time, and then there'd be some onsite prep time to get them ready. I will tell you that, again... I will tell you that, again, the supply chain for PCs is tightening because schools are starting to make their summer purchases early, and there have been a number of critical earthquakes near LCD manufacturing plants in Japan, which has caused the supply of the, one of the most important components of a computer to become short in terms of its availability. So, I can't give you exact answers as to when we could have this up and running. I would say best case is the end of February, beginning of March. Worst case is end of March, beginning of April, but either scenario would require us to move quickly.
And would these, would this investment, were we planning any of these investments outside of the world of remote learning?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question, Mr. Nagel.
So, if it, if we weren't teaching our students remotely right now, would we be looking at making this size of an investment?
Well, the laptops that the teachers K6 are using are five years old, and they're slated for replacement this, this summer. Would we be replacing them with PCs that are much more expensive than Chromebooks? I think that would be a discussion item. I mean, I've been favoring moving to giving teachers PCs for a while now because I just think you can create more content, and there's more possibilities for what you can offer students when you're making your own learning objects. However, could we continue with Chromebooks? Sure, we absolutely could. But we would need to replace the current crop of PCs that K6 teachers use before the beginning of next school year. And we don't really have adequate numbers of devices for paras and instructional aides to have computers at this point in time, and so, that's something that we've never had because we never gave instructional aides and paras those computers because they didn't need them when they were on site and they were in the classroom with those devices, with students who had those devices. And so, some of those things are new, some of those things are a result of COVID, and some of those things we would have to do anyway.
Ron, if we have a larger number of students as we go forward that want to stay remote, how well will we be positioned with the technology we're getting on board?
Well, right now, we have the PC or the Chromebooks that are being used by students in grades one through six were purchased two years ago. Actually, this is their, this is, we're ending their second year. And so, they're in good condition. I believe that those students have a reasonably decent experience at home. Of course, elementary kids, they don't have 40 tabs open at one time. You know, they have the tab that their teacher has the conference on, and maybe they have a tab that has their, their classroom assignment and schoolology on it. But, you know, when you're looking at high school and middle, upper middle school kids, and I want to say specifically grade seven through 12, well, these kids, they have more sophisticated use of technology. And so, number one, the Chromebooks that our kids are using in grade seven through 12, they are also five years old, destined to be replaced this summer. And so, it's about 2,000 devices that need to be replaced. And so, you know, right away, we're going to look at buying more powerful Chromebooks. You know, right now, our Chromebooks have four gigs of RAM and, I think, 32 gigs of solid-state drive. And not, and it's a Celeron lightweight processor. Again, remember when we bought one-to-one, what we were shooting for? And it wasn't remote instruction. And so, you know, we want to buy a more capable Chromebook at least, and maybe we want to buy PCs for kids. And, you know, I can't tell you, you know, those things are going to really depend on your budget appetite to buy those things because if we buy PCs for students, we're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of $600 or $700 a device at least, whereas we buy Chromebooks for students, we're looking at somewhere around $300 per device. And so, you know, it's a budgetary decision that has real-world ramifications.
Is this, is this on a rotation of some kind of lease? Like, is it every three years or four years? Or is that, is that what you're looking at?
Apparently, the district has not leased equipment. It would be my suggestion, well, let me back up. I would say Ron's hit on some of the things we've talked about when we considered some of these plans. Obviously, you have a large volume of equipment that is aging and obsolete and has been repurposed. You have done large purchases and then put them off for long periods of time, so equipment has become obsolete. The other thing you've done is you have a huge variety of equipment. You have desktops, you have laptops, you have PCs, you have Apples and MacBooks, you have Chromebooks. I mean, you have this huge variety of equipment because there was no strategy or commitment to go to one type of device, and you have a very limited tech staff to manage that variety of devices. So, by taking the strategy of using laptops with docking stations and monitors, it gives the teacher the flexibility to be remote with their laptop, but yet, the convenience of having a desktop and a projector already hooked in with a wireless keyboard and a mouse when they're at their desk. So, it gives them the flexibility to work in a remote or in a live classroom at the same time, and it also reduces the variety of equipment that we have to manage within the district with a limited tech staff. I think you have to look at, and at least that's the way I look at it, I look at these devices as now tools in the classroom that are necessary, that we use now to deliver instruction, just like a textbook. They are used, and they are not going to go away. We are now into a new era, and we're not going back. Kids now expect to have this device. Teachers need these devices to function every day. And so, we're going to have to go with a strategy to be able to keep this up-to-date and infused in our classrooms the way it needs to be. So, for that, for that reason, I would recommend that you go with three-year leases on this equipment. You can get more value when you trade them in, getting newer equipment and updated equipment. And then, you know, if you get $450,000 on a lease over three years, yeah, you're paying interest, but you're paying about $12,300 or $12,500 worth of interest over three years, which is fairly insignificant compared to copping up $450,000 in one year. You can cop up $153,000 or $154,000 in a year rather than laying it all out in one year, and then, you can phase it in. Yeah, eventually, you're going to have a half million dollars maybe or $400,000 in your budget, but it'll be there every year. You'll constantly be getting new equipment every year as these leases expire. Once you get through a three or a four or a five, you know, whatever cycle you're going to build, you're then going to be able to maintain what you have every year in the district and constantly be refreshing your equipment. It's a better strategy for you to manage it moving forward, in my opinion.
So, are you saying the $450,000 that Mr. Ryer, that you were talking about, that's to buy, not to lease?
That's to buy.
And what you're saying is, we can get the same thing for $150,000 if we lease it for three years?
You would pay over three years, you would pay out probably about $462,000 at 2.75%, which is the latest rate I've got.
But, but, but then, we turn it back in, trade it in, and we have new equipment?
At the end of three years, you would turn it back in?
And this is, this equipment is just for teachers right now and the paras?
Correct.
Yes.
And then, your long-term technology plan would have to build a strategy on how you're going to start replacing this equipment, and then, you'd build a series of leases so that you would constantly be refreshing every year?
The question is, if we install these before the end of the year and we have, gosh, help us, staff with a panic attack. We are going to do training, and we are going to sit with them, and these techs are going to be able to help them through this process because, guess what? They're teaching 10 kids online, they got 10 kids in the classroom, and you're handing them all brand-new equipment. That is a panic attack for teachers that are stressed to the max because they are teaching remote or because they're teaching hybrid right now. I need, I need to know that we have the staff to do that.
And so, we've, I've heard the teachers' concerns about that. And originally, we were going to give them the new computers if they were approved and take out their classroom PC. And I think everybody is concerned that they don't want to do that in the middle of the year, per your concern. However, maybe, and, you know, I'm offering this as a, as a little bit of a temporary concession, we could allow the teachers to have the existing PC, and then, we take it in the summertime. And so, you know... We have a difference of opinion about that because I don't believe that having a laptop that is a PC is any different than having a desktop. They do the same thing.
The only thing is, I understand what you're saying. I'm just telling you, and I get what they're saying because they're so used to things, and we have, you know, this school year has been turned upside down, left, right, and backwards. Let's, let's all be honest. So, asking those teachers to do one more thing is a concern.
Well, are they, do they have PCs right now?
They do.
They do.
So, you're just replacing a PC with a PC?
Correct.
But, well, there's new equipment. There's new equipment. You're telling them to dock a laptop. Those PCs are permanent in the classroom. You're changing out their audio/video. You're changing out their camera. You're changing out, there's a whole lot of change going on there, too.
To dock the PC, it's just a matter of just plugging it in.
I, I, I do it. I do. I'm just telling you. It's just setting it down. But, there is a whole new, that, that's a whole new thing to them. I'm just, it's been...
Let me just make one, one comment, too, about what Ron said, dealing with. I, I think, Ron, even your late optimistic, your late assessment of when equipment would be available is probably optimistic, so that question may answer itself.
I was getting there. I just had, I just had two more things. One, is all this equipment that we're giving these K to six teachers compatible, and we're not going to have any glitches with the kids sitting at home?
Well, glitch covers a lot of territory, so...
Well, that's, that's a terminology a parent would use who's trying to get their kid on the computer, and they can't see them, and they can't do this, and they can't do that. And then, the teacher can't see the student, so I'm calling it a glitch.
Specifically, the problems we've had are that the Chromebooks, when the teachers are teaching from home, don't have enough horsepower. And they don't have enough horsepower because they weren't bought with enough horsepower to do remote instruction because that's not why we bought them. You know, at the time, we bought teachers' Chromebooks, we bought them Chromebooks so that they could have the same technology their kids had and feel comfortable implementing one-to-one learning. And they met that need pretty well at the time. And so, they've been forced into much more severe service here during COVID, and they're not meeting that need as well. So, the PCs, they're, you know, they have, they're Windows 10, Intel i5, 11th-generation processor, 16 gigs of RAM, and a 256-gig solid-state drive. So, that's a pretty beefy machine, relatively speaking. I mean, it's, you know, I would say an order of magnitude of power and processing over a five-year-old Chromebook. So, to answer your question, yeah, I believe the teachers will, will have a good experience with these devices.
I'm not just concerned about the teachers on that end, as the student at the, at home.
Well, the students K6, I don't think have had nearly the problems using their own devices as they have had receiving the conference feeds from the teachers when they're using old devices that can't keep up with the feed rates. And so, automatically, when the teachers have better experiences, the students are also going to have better experiences.
Mr. McClellan, I have, I mean, I come from corporate world, so we do the three-year lease. I mean, that's how we, that's how you do things because you get the most up-to-date because if somebody said, "By the time I put this on your desk, it's probably obsolete" because there's another better one coming down the kind of pike. So...
No, talk more clearly.
So, my question to you is, the recommendation to lease, at least the teachers' computers, would probably be financially beneficial. Yeah, we're going to get to a point where it's $500,000 a year, but it's budgeted every year, and we know what we're, we know what that's for, and we're getting the latest equipment for our teachers, and, as you said, in a whole new educational environment. My next question is, for parents, then, as we decide what we're doing with Chromebooks, if we lease them, are they still able to buy or be supplemented with the protection plans that all the parents buy on that, and can you explain a little more of that, about how that would?
Yeah, she could still do that.
So, I like, you know, what you were talking about, the consistency. I think we talked about that in a previous meeting. Being able to have, you know, one client management infrastructure that can push updates, you know, administer security settings, and, you know, push drivers and all that kind of stuff is important. It just, it'll make, it'll simplify the operation of the whole district from a technology standpoint. You know, I like, you know, the, the kind of hardware for this instance that you're pushing. I guess my main question is, is this setting our IT strategy in a very tactical way? Okay, and, and, you know, we're, we're looking for a solution here, but we're going to outfit, what, 150 teachers or so with this hardware? And now, does that dictate what our future hardware strategy is?
Well, I think it points us in that direction. You know, do we go, so, I mean, you're right, Mr. Christiansen. We are all over the map in terms of what we have. And, and there's some historical reasons for that. When we went one-to-one eight years ago, Microsoft didn't have a cloud yet. And so, we went with the technology that was available, which was Google and Chromebooks. Flash forward eight years, Microsoft has their stuff together, and they've got a pretty good cloud solution. Windows 10 is just a fantastic operating system. We're using Azure in the cloud as our directory service, and we're using Intune to manage and control Windows 10 PCs. And so, you know, that works pretty well, but it only works with Windows 10 PCs. It doesn't work with Macs, it doesn't work with Chromebooks, and it doesn't work with iPads. So, we have another platform that we manage Chromebooks with. It's called Google Admin Console.
Right.
We have another platform we manage MacBooks and iPads with. It's called Mozill. And we have the Google Admin Console that we use to manage Chromebooks. So, we've got four platforms that we use to manage our myriad of devices. And it is time-consuming and, and difficult to keep all those balls up in the air. It would be nice to get to a single consolidated platform. We've had some discussions at admin about when is the right time to have a broader technology committee to start talking about these things. And I think even at the executive session, we touched on that briefly when we were providing information. And so, the problem we're trying to address now, I have heard, is more serious than can wait for a full technology committee to kind of figure those things out. And so, you know, hopefully, I'm going to have some input into the technology committee. And yes, I like Windows devices, and I think that that's where we should be for staff especially. And maybe eventually, we get there for students, but it's a long road to figure out and get buy-in because, you know, our teaching staff has a huge say in what it is the district does. And we're going to have to have them on these committees, this committee, in order to be part of that conversation to see if that's someplace we can get to.
Yeah, I guess, you know, my question is, if we, what is the risk or the chance of maybe going down this path with this group of, you know, with, with the elementary students, those teachers? And then, I don't know, we have to do a refresh in the middle school and the, and the high school. You know, what's the risk of going down some different path? And so, then, our fragmentation stays just as complex it is right now, I guess. You know, it'd be nice to evaluate this in the context of, is this the same kind of refresh? Does this dictate our refresh, hardware refresh that we're going to do across the board then for all staff?
I, I, I think I would address that or answer that by saying, I think the risk is minimal.
Yeah.
I think the solution we're proposing gives you a great deal of flexibility, the staff member a great deal of flexibility. And it also doesn't commit you to having that equipment for the next 10 years. Again, you're leasing it, so it's only going to be there for three years. I think you're right. I think the tech committee should be formed because it's something that's going to constantly change. A new technology is going to come down the road in another year, and we're going to say, wow, we should investigate that. And maybe, but I think by leasing and doing a three-year renewal, it gives you the ability to adapt and change the technology as it's changing. You know, if I had foresight and knew what was going to happen two years down the road, yeah, I could maybe make a different decision. But I think, given our current status, this really provides us the most flexibility we can have.
can have moving forward. And I think getting that tech committee established and then setting those criteria for how we're going to evaluate when things need to replace, when they're no longer useful, when they've outused their life, and then building that five-year plan or whatever it is to refresh technology. Part of that's even getting an inventory, a good inventory of what we have now. So I think, you know, there's still going to be opportunities to reuse some equipment from time to time, especially with projectors and some other things that may live a little longer. But again, there's opportunity to build that into a lease as well if we need to replace. So I think this strategy gives us the most flexibility we can have moving forward.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And, you know, maybe it's just, you know, a minor point, but it comes down to the, like, the positioning of this. So I, I'd feel comfortable if we said that this is our hardware refresh kit for all staff going forward. Is that, is that effectively what we're saying?
That's what I would say, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So when you're talking about leasing, the company that we lease from wouldn't, they would lease all kinds of equipment, right? It wouldn't just be, we'd lease the, this, with this company because they have PCs.
We would go out to a third party to look for the best interest rates on that. And typically, what happens then is, once we've determined this is the best rate we're going to get for this lease, then we'll execute documents. They're pretty much dead instruments for capital leases for, for the lease structure and how it's going to be set up. And then that company orders the equipment for us and they pay for the equipment. And then we pay the debt service payments when they're dead.
So in your previous experience, you've leased technology equipment before, so you know?
Yes, I've done it at every district I've been at, yes.
Ah, okay. All right. So my question to all of you is, do you want to put something like this on the agenda for next week with the leasing information? Or, or do you want more information? Or, and/or both? And we could do the same thing, table it if we don't like what we hear.
Yeah, I think, I, I think a, a lot of this also falls into the strategic plan.
Well, the technology committee has to be formed to, as part of that, too, and, and to do that projection forward.
So how long?
But this is, this is, as I think Mr. Ryer said, this is for immediate problems. And as Mr. Christensen said, it's a hardware refresh. I guess our question would be, how necessary is it? And so if, maybe you could give us information about that next week in terms of, you know, is this, can we survive without it for the rest of the year? Or do we need something now in order to make it, our educational delivery more efficient and productive, I guess?
Yeah, I think that, and that would fall in line with where we would go with the strategic plan.
Yeah, so if you can answer that for next week and put it on.
That's going to tie into how quickly you're going to back to the classroom instruction versus online instruction.
Well, we're going to have online instruction the rest of the year, no matter what.
You will.
Because we have remote students, then that option is there for the rest of the year. So that's a, that kind of, right.
I think when we have problems. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I'd also like to reiterate, I believe Mr. Ryer said that these devices for teachers were due to be replaced this summer regardless.
Yes.
Am I, am I right? So we need to think about that aspect of it also.
Agree, but we would have had at least one meeting for the strategic plan and probably could have a IT committee for that if it wasn't an immediate need.
So to that point, did we budget for the replacement this summer?
So we budgeted for replacement of Chromebooks, not for Windows 10 PCs.
Okay, but there was something in, there was a budget number in the, okay.
Okay.
You know, I also saw that we're, we're getting about, what, 1.2 million from, you know, the COVID relief. Can any of this, you know, can any of that be used to pay the additional amount that we haven't budgeted?
It, it can be used for that. I tend to recommend not using federal money for equipment purchases because there are an extreme amount of regulations that wrap around when you ever go to dispose of that equipment.
Even if it's a lease?
And getting government permission to dispose of that equipment if it's federal equipment.
Even, even a lease versus capitalized?
Yes.
Okay.
And with the money, Doug, for, we're, we're talking about the larger expenditure, but that's divided into, what, a half or a third? So that, that amount of money was set aside if we go for the lease?
I don't like to get into too much accounting lingo, but the way it's recorded in your financial records is that we will charge all of the equipment to the expense line on it. But that is offset by the amount of lease funds you're going to receive in the revenues. So it becomes revenue neutral in your budget. And what the difference is, is the one year, the first year lease payment in your debt service. So that's, that's the net effect of what's going to happen. Even though you're going to see the large expenditure, you'll see a large revenue offsetting it. And then you'll see the expenditure for the debt service payment, which will be about, if you're going to get $450, it'd be about $150, $150,000.
This is the difference between the accounting and the cash flow, right? I mean, the cash flow is one, if it's over three years, your lease payment is going to be charged.
That's correct. You'll have about $150 to $158, depending on the interest.
Mm-hmm.
I have one more question. So when and if this occurs and we give these teachers these new PCs, what's the plan for the old PCs? And will we allow them to keep them for like a month or so to help, to help the transition process?
That's what we talked about.
Yeah, so I think that depends on what, what Doug will allow me to allow them to do. So I, I think it's reasonable to allow them to have a little bit of transition time. But ultimately, I think that most of the teachers are going to be comfortable enough to say, hey, we, we can go with this because we've been using PCs.
You, you own that equipment, so you can do whatever you want to eventually.
I mean, it's not, is it worth anything?
Well, the.
You're not really going to get much for it, I think.
So, you know.
Can we let the teachers buy it?
So Bethel Park Strategies, since as long as I've been here, has always been to buy something and keep it forever. And, and so that, that's not my philosophy. That's Bethel Park's philosophy. And I just kind of fit into Bethel Park when I came and said, okay, well, if we have to keep it forever, we'll keep it forever. And so, you know, we, we've had PCs routinely 10 or 11 years. Now, we upgrade the memory and we upgrade the hard drive. And so they're still usable, but they're old. And, and so now the PCs that, that are in use in K-6, I want to say they're not ancient, but by leasing standards, they're ready to go. The ones I think at the high school are a little newer than that. And so they've got maybe another year and a half, two years on them. But the K-6 ones, I think they're four at this point in time. I have to look at my records and see when we bought this, but I want to say they're four years old.
Those would be costs in your budget that I would see declining over time because you wouldn't have to buy all those spare parts and upgraded parts. And you probably wouldn't have as much repair-type costs that you're, you're spending now to maintain equipment that's 10 and eight and 10 and 12 years old.
So what do we do with an old PC that's no longer?
Well, when they're 10 or 11, nobody wants them. And so we, we call various recyclers and try to find somebody who will pick them up for free. Now, you know, if it's a MacBook, we can usually get somebody to pay us a few dollars for it, even if it's an outdated MacBook. But nobody pays you anything for PCs. They just, you're, you're really fortunate to be able to get them to take them without charging you. And so we just got rid of, I want to say, eight pallets of old PCs a couple of weeks ago that the board had approved, I think in December. And so, you know, that's what we would do with these. Now, you know, could we sell them? Well, we'd have to talk about that because I know that there's a lot of interest from the community in buying old equipment. But we have to make sure that if we do something like that, that A, they're sanitized and there's a cost to sanitization. And when I say sanitized, I mean that we don't wind up giving some, letting somebody buy a PC that they've, that a parent or, or somebody from outside the community buys and finds a special education IEP identifying the student on it. That would not be good. And so you have to be able to wipe the data. And again, that takes time. When we give them to the recyclers, we pull the hard drives. But if we pull the hard drive, it's not going to be useful for a parent because it's not going to work. We have licensing that gives us the ability to use Windows. Parents don't have access to use our licensing. And so if we give a parent a PC without an operating system, even if it has a hard drive, well, they're going to have to go out and buy an operating system and install on it. And that's a cost. You know, operating system cost, if you don't have one already that you can upgrade, you're looking at somewhere between $75 and $100. So, you know, there's a lot of gotchas in, in selling old equipment while it looks good and it looks like it would be a PR-positive thing. I think it could very quickly come and bite us in the butt if we tried to do that.
Mr. McCoslin. So you mentioned, again, to go back to the leasing really quick, we talked about this is for staff, correct? This, this group right here of computers? So eventually, we'll be able to have a leasing program K through 12 for everything? Is that what you're saying, eventually?
Yeah.
Across the whole board?
It could go for students as well.
Students as well? And it would be more cost, maybe cost-effective or, or not? I don't.
I just think it allows you to eventually build up to where you're going to have an annual spend.
Right.
But you're also going to be in a cycle of keeping things up to date.
Fresh.
Getting obsolete.
Okay.
That's, that's.
So that would be more of the, like a longer-term technology plan, K through 12?
And part of that is, is, you know, how do you get rid of the old equipment? Well, most of these have, you know, buyback programs. So you, since they're only three years old, you're going to get a little bit of money in the trade.
Okay. Somebody else is going to buy it and use them from year four to year 11, and not us.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably more of a technology win than a money savings over time, correct?
Right.
Right.
It's not, leasing companies are in business to make money.
Yeah, to me, again, it's just the commitment to say, this is a device that you now use for educational purposes. So why are we trying to avoid having tools that, you know, aren't working for students and staff? They need to have tools that work for them if we want to have the best programs.
Thank you, Mr. McCoslin.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda was the student desk shields.
Do you want to show that, Mr. Dr. D'Imperio? And tell us whether you recommend it or not?
I, I can say that. We're exploring this. There's no final decision that has been made, but we're taking a look at it and how well they work, how effective they are, and whether it's something that we feel that we need to move to. But so, so we, we have considered this. When you take a look at this, there is a huge expenditure. If it does all the things that we want it to, you know, we would give it a, a serious consideration. But right now, we're just in the talking stage as we get ready to increase population at the schools.
Any comments or questions about that?
Mr. McCoslin, the last one is, I think you want to talk about the, the next date for a finance meeting?
Sure. I need to have a preliminary budget ready at some point next week. But you do have a board meeting and I know that's probably not the time to do it. I was, if it's okay with you, I was thinking maybe the first week in February, we could schedule something. It would be a public meeting. Obviously, the public's welcome to come. Maybe I'll follow up with you, Mr. Christensen, on the type of things you'd like to see. But really was looking at, you know, obviously, an overall breakdown of function and object for expenditures, talking in good bill about revenues and where the trends are going. Talking a lot about staffing numbers because that's going to be big. Obviously, your feasibility study, when it's completed, is going to tie into some of these things as well. Talking about your top expenditures. I don't know how much trend information I'm going to have yet. I'm still working on that. And I'm still trying to get data loaded into Forecast 5 so I can build some trends that are better. But I've, right now, most of my time has been trying to get the initial budget put together. You're not going to see a very trimmed-down budget. Obviously, this is the first draft preliminary. A lot of the numbers are really not hard, you know, hard numbers yet. So I don't want people to get shocked when they see the initial number and how, how to whack it is because there's still a lot of work to do between now and May when we top the, you know, propose the final budget. So those were my initial ideas. I think eventually, we'd like to look at some comparative data. But maybe we can have a conversation over the next couple of days and we can put together an agenda for that. I don't know if the board has any date, the first week in February.
We like Tuesdays.
The second?
February 2nd probably would be.
That's fine with me.
If that's okay with everyone? Okay.
Okay. Seven, seven o'clock or 6:30? You want to go earlier? You tell me.
How about?
Seven o'clock, five, six.
Six, six is.
Six is fine.
Six, yeah, that's two six.
February 2nd at six, and I will advertise that. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Turner.
We have several policies up for revisions in the first reading after I met with Anthony and Amy and several others. It was discovered that the Title IX policy that was approved earlier last, last year that was required changes by the USDAO. There were a couple of additional changes that PSBA put out and PDE put out. So there are policy changes to 103, 203, 247, 249, 252, 317.2, and 824. And most of these references from 202 to 824 are a reference to 103. Did I get that all right?
And these are all, I, I saw them in board docs listed separately, but I imagine they're also under policies to be revised on the website or not yet?
Yes, they're under policies to be revised on the, Mary Beth, I believe, put them on the website.
Okay. And Ms. Zundl, do you want to talk to, regarding any of these?
No, so I can, I know that we looked at 103 and 104, I think it was in September. In addition to the Title IX changes, there are, there's one particular policy that the, actually, two policies that the edits are in response to a revision to the school code that occurred in November of 2020, which requires schools to take certain steps after a student is adjudicated delinquent after committing a sexual assault potentially against another student. So that act was passed in November of 2020. And this is just making sure that our policies are updated to, to address those new provisions of the school code.
Does anyone have any further questions at this time?
What about the Kim and, and the zero 11?
That's what, we're doing that one next.
What's that?
We'll do that next. Mary Beth put them in as two different things.
Okay.
One was a revision and one was an approval. Any questions? Can I move? The next one up there is the approval of policy, the principles for governance and leadership. The poster board behind Mrs. Rule has been updated by PSBA. And in just not updating the, the board and the PSBA standards, they have now also made it as a policy. So there is a new policy that is being added to Bethel Park policy, which is the 011 for principles and governance. And once this is approved, we'll get the new standards bulletin, too, for PSBA.
Okay. Any questions about that?
Technically, not much change from that one to this one, but they did make it a policy.
I think it's good to have it as a policy.
Are we okay to move those two items to the consent agenda?
Yes. Thank you for asking that.
Since their first of three readings, do we vote?
We can't move to the consent agenda.
Oh, we don't vote on it next time because it's, it'll be the second.
It's first of, yeah. It wouldn't be until the next meeting.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened.
It's your first, second, and then approved on third. Mm-hmm. Did you hear that, Doug? It's first, second, and approved on third. Okay.
It's first, second, and approved on third.
I just lost my reading. No, I, it just came up as. Okay, I got that. All right. This next one is about the nomination for candidacy to the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. Currently, our esteemed board member, Mrs. Rule, serves for us, but it's not, the nomination doesn't mean that you would automatically become a representative. It's voted on at the AIU meeting in March, and the term would run from July 1st of this year to June 30th of 2024. And so if anyone is interested, you would have to be on the board until 2024. So is there anybody interested?
What I can tell you is the process is that, I don't know if they'll do it virtually this year, but generally, we did a presentation before the conference that we'd have, and I don't know how they'll do it this year. And you would state what your experience was on the board, what you bring as an asset to that board, and why you're interested in a position. It is, I think there's like fourteen or fifteen of us on the board. We represent forty-two school districts. The people will then vote on people to assume those positions. It's a really great thing to learn what all other schools are doing. But they also have committees, just like you have here. I mean, I was on the Personnel Committee, which we hired, you know, as director, other people within. So it's similar to being on this board. It's just that you have a broader reach and you learn more, that's all. It's a great experience. I think I've been doing it for about twelve years after Dick Ruse.
So is there anyone interested in being nominated for that candidacy? It would have to be someone who is just newly elected and would be on the board? Well, no, I, yeah, newly elected and would be on the board until 2024. Okay, so if we don't have anyone who's interested in that?
If you can, I would like to talk to Connie some more about it.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that would be great. We would put this on the agenda if you're interested then for next week with your name in there.
That's there.
Yes, Mr. McGregor is.
Mr. McGregor, thank you.
And again, it's not a, it's not, we nominate somebody, but then there's still, that person is still running for election. There are about, usually about four or five other candidates.
On how many schools send them?
Right. Regarding the strategic plan, this is one of our goals, to set up a strategic planning committee and get started with it. So for next week on the agenda, I would like to have an item to host and approve a strategic committee in order to start to get people who would like to be on that strategic committee, strategic plan committee, and maybe even some of the composition of, you know, who, obviously, community members, parents, staff, administration as representatives on that plan committee, and then hopefully get started with the first meetings for that in February. And this would be for our strategic plan that we're determined to create for the next five to ten years. So we're looking long-range for this. This committee is not the state-required, it's not called a strategic.
Comprehensive plan is what the future-ready index comprehensive plan is what the state requires.
And is that due this year?
It is due in the other.
So would that be a subdivision of this or a separate?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that the comprehensive plan, that information, the data collection, could definitely inform the strategic plan committee to make some recommendations in a variety of different places. The comprehensive plan basically is right now based on the future-ready index, which is PSSA scores, graduation rates, career-ready goals, based on those components. But it's kind of more specific than what the strategic plan would be. So I think that that, that maybe there could be a subcommittee of the strategic plan committee that could also be on the comprehensive committee, comprehensive plan.
Is the comprehensive plan requires a committee?
It does.
Okay, so that would be a subcommittee of the strategic plan, you're saying?
That's what I would think, that they could, that there could be, you know, there could be information that could definitely come from the comprehensive plan group.
Okay, thank you.
So if we're going to have an item on there, the item would be for the comprehensive planning committee, and then a subset would be developed for the strategic planning committee.
Vice versa.
Vice versa?
We want to.
Your larger committee would be the strategic plan committee, a subcommittee would be the comprehensive plan committee.
I would recommend that we just, you know, prioritize our time and effort on the strategic plan. The comprehensive plan, you know, honestly, I don't know what value we get from that. So, you know, take the main initiatives from the strategic plan, just fill out the comprehensive plan, we'll review it, you know, maybe through the committee. But I would say in terms of, you know, effort, whether it's the administration or the different committees, let's try to focus the effort on the more actionable items, which would come out of the strategic plan. The comprehensive plan is just, you know, in my experience, just a bureaucratic obligation that we have to the state that we get very little value from.
And you said that before, Mr. Christiansen, and the reason I said it the way I did is because we still have to meet that state requirement of the comprehensive plan, meeting the requirements of who serves on that committee, and we have the ability to create subcommittees. So I.
Maybe we should keep them separate.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's really the comprehensive plan that we need to approve, and then within that, establish a strategic plan committee with different processes and goals.
Well, we'll talk about it.
Okay, so, yeah, that's where I think we may need some clarification. And I think I did mention to you that Dr. Walsh had provided a nice timeline and some very detailed strategies for working through the process.
Okay, so we'll, on next week's agenda, then have something about the strategic plan and something, I don't know whether we need an action to create a committee for the comprehensive plan. Have you done that in the past?
Mr. Cromie and I have had conversations of, we have not, it has not been a board action because it's required from PDE that I just basically have posted and asked for volunteers, and then we kind of grouped around that.
That would be much different than.
And I, yeah, and if it's, and if it's the board's wishes, legitimately, it can be done as a separate entity, you know. I'll do whatever you need me to do to make sure it's done.
Thank you.
So where are we with that, Mrs. Davis?
We're going to put the strategic plan formation next week on the, on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. No, I think, okay. Okay, thank you.
And then the comprehensive plan can be done with Dr. O'Rourke and Mr. Cromie. The next item, I think, Mr. Nagel, you talked a little bit about the diversity task force, but you mentioned that in your committee report. At this point in time, as you mentioned, we will need to start to enlarge that committee or that task force to include more than just administrators and school board members. Is that accurate?
Yes. As it stands right now, there are building-level administrators, school board members, Dr. O'Rourke, Dr. D'Imperio has participated, as well as Mrs. Ford as our diversity and inclusion consultant. We've been in the information gathering stage, and as I said, survey went out yesterday to various stakeholder groups to get a, get a more, more or less a self-assessment of where everybody feels we are. As we start going through that and trying to evaluate that, I think it's important that we start reaching at and including more stakeholders. I talked to Dr. O'Rourke and Dr. D'Imperio about even before we gather that information and have another meeting, maybe starting to reach out and expand that group to staff to help us go over that information and start formulating, start consolidating and assessing better where we are and where we need to go. So that's the game plan right now. As I've said, I really encourage everybody to take a few minutes to respond to the survey so we can get a fairly accurate view of where, where we feel we are as different stakeholders. And Dr. O'Rourke and Dr. D'Imperio and the rest of the committee, I believe, will be starting to try to build this committee outward to include more of the stakeholders as we go forward with the information we've gathered.
So, Dr. O'Rourke, in order to create a district-wide committee, you can just do that, right?
I can, yes.
Okay.
And that's the next step. And this committee would include outside, beyond the teachers and the staff, so it would be considered a district-wide committee that would be open to parents and community members as well.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Rourke.
As will the strategic plan committee, too.
And the comprehensive plan.
Yes, right, they're all district-wide.
Is just it.
Yes.
I do, I do want to clarify while I have a minute. Our committee and our task force for diversity and inclusion, I anticipate that that's going to be kind of enveloped into the strategic planning going forward also. So when we're talking about that and a lot of the other things, just for clarity, I just want to make sure all of us are on the same page. Technology, feasibility, all of that, all of this is going to kind of be enveloped underneath the strategic planning, I believe.
I think that's a pretty accurate statement, and I think that's what we've all been talking about for the last six months at least. So yes, we will make sure that it's all part of the big process for planning for the future.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, as we were talking about different committees and forming different committees, that these are all part of the bigger picture.
Yes, yes, that's a, I think that's been a big focus for us because we want to be able to look down the road, five to ten years, in terms of the future of this district, with the ability to also evaluate that yearly to update our goals and our, our vision and for the future. Which leads us to our feasibility and demographic study by the Hays Group. I believe, Dr. D'Imperio, that the Hays Group is going to give us a report next week?
That is correct. I do have some specific items that I would like them to update the board on in terms of the feasibility and demographic study that they're doing for the district. So I will be in contact with them to try to narrow down the focus of their presentation at next week's public meeting.
Anybody have any comments or anything that you want to say about that? So as I remember correctly, if, correct me if I'm wrong, we've hired them to make sure that we have a good demographic study so that we know what our future enrollment might be based on buildings of homes and.
Trends in general.
Trends in general and different things like that. And also, we'll have a assessment of our buildings as part of that so that we know where the current state of our buildings is.
And I think it's worth clarifying that in terms of expectations next week, in terms of expectations next week, this isn't going to be about making decisions. This is just about data. It's about kind of the current situation, trends, but it will feed a lot of the things that we do around these different chapters of the strategic plan. And so I think it's just worth, again, you know, letting people know, especially if you're considering, you know, tuning in for this rather long presentation, it's not about making decisions, it's about understanding current state.
The best way to say it is the state of the building and the state of where we're all.
Right.
And, sorry, the state of the building and the state of where we're going and where it is headed is, because that, you know, we're all seeing some new building.
I don't think your microphone's on.
Sorry. We see some signs of new, new buildings and new homes going, but are those, you know, homes that will have families or those homes for retirement or, I mean, we've seen a lot of retirement communities come out lately, too. So I think we really need to get the state of the district from them, and that's what we're looking for. We're not looking for how to make the decision because I think the strategic planning process will help us make those decisions as we have the data, and it should not just be from one source.
I think that's right. I agree. So, thank you, Dr. D'Imperio, for organizing that. Okay, the public comments actually have come up for me. There's two people that, we read their comments for.
Now they came through.
They came through. So now I have to go and check to see my inbox.
There's not an inbox if they send it to all of us.
What?
There's no new ones in the inbox.
No new ones, okay. All right, then. Let's, any board comments?
Can I, can I follow up with one of the public comments?
Yes, speak real clearly.
I know these masks are.
I can hardly hear you.
I want to follow up on one of the public comments because now I have a little bit of a concern, too, because the parent had asked about why they're not using the playyard, and I'm going to guess it's a disinfecting issue with why we're not using the playyard. But my other concern is, and the only reason I bring this up, is my six-year-old Saul, the other day, that he had, we have family friends that live out of state, and they live in Wisconsin. We also have families, family friends that live in Minnesota, and they're outside playing, and it's cold. I know that one elementary school today did not send the kids outside even to be, you know, out and about citing cold. These kids put on their hat and their gloves and they go out. They need that fresh air. What is, and I couldn't find it quickly, so I'm hoping somebody can direct me in this way and direct parents, what is the rule for when we send them out and when we don't? Because again, we're not sending them out, so they have to social distance in the classroom. We go back to that, how do we get them in four to five days a week? The social distancing is required for lunch. The social distance is required for extracurriculars of if they're older and they're in band and those kinds of things. How do we get them to get out? That might be an availability to get them back, but what is, what is, what are those rules?
Typically, at the elementary, I believe that the degree is 32 degrees. However, there's other stipulating circumstances that go into why an inside day might be called. And it may be a supervision issue if the, we don't have the noontime aids or something to that degree. There could be a lot of different things that might go into that decision to keep the kids in. Right now, we've opted to keep, because of the disinfecting between the caf, the lunch periods, keeping the kids off of the equipment, but allowing them to go outside, though we're not playing contact sports and, and those kind of things, as a, a safety precaution. And I, I hear what you're saying, we want the kids to be there. We've talked about that and we'll talk about it again tomorrow when our principals are together to talk about how we can do better with getting the kids outside, especially on decent days. But it's, there's a lot that, a lot of different things that go into that. It might not just be the temperature.
Okay, I understand that, but if we're playing high school sports inside, I think we need to find a way to let these kids get out on the playground. There, you know, we're playing high school sports, we need to figure out a way to give these kids a little bit of an outlet. And I do have, that may be giving us an outlet to send kids back as we stagger lunch periods for those that we cannot six feet's distance at lunch if we get increased capacity at schools.
Other board comments?
I would like to make one. I want to thank Mr. Valani and Dr. Imperio and, and Dr. O'Rourke and, I'm trying to think, and Mr. Nagel for spearheading a project that's come to our attention with the trades, you'll be hearing more about it. But it's been an exciting time for me for the last week because I've been on the board a long time and haven't been able to, they say timing's everything. I think the timing finally has come for CTE students to recognize the skills and the opportunities that exist around them and the pay skills that go with it when you come out with no debt. So we are looking at opportunities with one of the trades association right now of looking at what the school can do, along with what the, the business people in the community can do. And it's an exciting time. We also had a meeting with Steel Center, and they explained all of the new programs and also opportunities that the students now have available once they've gone through their courses, what options they have coming out, including if they want to go on further to college. Because we do have an agreement with another college that accepts their credits and things. But other pathways they can have. So the timing is right because the jobs that are available and the salaries, our students need to be looking at those as another option. College isn't for, for everyone. For people that are strong in your math and sciences, the, the trades are looking for them. So we hope to do a, a larger skill project, including the community, and get the schools involved. So we'll be keeping you up to date, but I want to thank all the administration that made those meetings possible. Thank you.
I had something to Pam before we.
I will, I do too, but go ahead. Is there any other school board member who wants to say anything or have any comments?
You know, I, I just want to reiterate with Ken that please fill out that survey. It's, it's very important. It's only going to take you a couple of minutes. And the feedback we get is going to be incredible, so I, I, you know, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yep, Mrs. Turner, you had asked about some meal distribution that had come up in some of the groups that you're a member of. I did talk to Mr. Cosmagno, and we had talked about this earlier today, but I wasn't aware of the full extent. Right now, he's trying a, on a trial basis at Neil Armstrong for the days that children are currently not in school on their hybrid days of sending two meals home with them and seeing how that works for the following day when they're not in school. And then using the next group that day to send two meals. And if that works, he's looking to expand that to the other buildings as well. Yes, it's, it's a trial basis. Yeah, yeah, they'll be given to the students to, 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 an opportunity for them to take them home and use them in their non-in-school days.
Anyone else? The only thing I would like to tell the public is that this is a school board director election year. And there are four positions that are going to be on the ballot. And I would like to encourage anyone who is interested in running for school director to do an internet search. And it's how to run for school director in Pennsylvania. And what will come up will be the Pennsylvania School Board Association, the PSBA. And what you'll find is that Thursday this week and Monday, they have a free course available for you on how to run for school director and the responsibilities and obligations that you need to be aware of. The petitions for school director, you can, are picked up in February, and they're returned like a month and a half later in order to be on the ballot. But the specifics of that, you can find out through watching this course. So I really strongly suggest anyone who might be interested to start to investigate it now, and then you can pick up a petition in February in order to run. And with that being said, I will tell you that I am not running this year. So my, the end of my term will be November of this year. So, any other comments?
You know, that was a, a great point that you brought up. And, you know, I want to encourage anybody else who's on the line who's remotely interested. Yes, please attend the webinars. Also, you know, I think everybody on this board would agree that the only goal we have is to make sure that we, you know, have, you know, qualified people who are on the board who, you know, have the best interests of the district at heart. You know, if you, anybody has questions about how to run also, and even after, you know, attending some of these webinars, reach out and call anybody on the board, call me. You know, I'd be happy to, you know, walk you through the process, kind of, you know, talk to you about what the roles, responsibilities are, how the board works. But absolutely fantastic topic to bring up, Pam. And anybody on this board would be happy to help any candidate who wants to entertain running for next year. But please, everybody, consider it.
Any other comments? All right, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Rule and seconded by Mr. Christensen. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting's adjourned.